Thank you for attending today's meeting, today's work session that is, and also special meeting. Today is Monday, Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Recording in progress.
Three P M. The work session of the City Council, the City of Trinidad will now come to order. We have one item on the work session, which is going to be the Fox West, Fox, Fox, the Fox West Theater update, and then after that we'll have a special meeting with executive items on there. So first item, one and only item is the Fox, Fox, forget about one these days, is the Fox West, West Theater update. So we have a gentleman here from, representing.
And I'll, I'll come introduce this item, Mayor Council. So we have Gregory Freeson here, who's the architect for the rehabilitation of the building, and he happened to be in town today, so it worked out really well for him to come do an update for you all. I just wanted to mention one thing, and Gregory might talk about it a little bit more, but as, as with many old buildings, we found a problem last week where the sewer pipe was draining just into the dirt underneath the stage. So I'm glad we found that, but, but yeah, just wanted to kind of highlight some of the fun times that we have restored old buildings.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean the performance is gonna stink though, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't. No. Drake, no you didn't. I'm gonna turn it over to Gregory, and he has a presentation for us, and we'll.
Do you want to speak into this?
Please. Gregory, thank you for being here, by the way.
It's a pleasure. This'll be quick.
Nope. Okay, yeah, we're gonna get started anyway.
All right, there we go. Just a quick update on some of the activities that are ongoing or about to occur at the Fox. This is an image taken some time ago, it's the asbestos fire curtain. Now, at the turn of the last century, there was a horrific fire in Chicago called the Iroquois Theater Fire. More people died in that building fire than any other one up until nine-one-one. That's how horrific it was. And the Rapp brothers from Trinidad had family in and around Chicago. In fact, they have some famous brothers also named the Raps in Chicago. So they went to tour that fire. And they toured the fire before the charred bodies had even been removed. So when they came back to Trinidad, they introduced state-of-the-art life safety features in this theater. One of them was the asbestos fire curtain, which a lot of theaters around the country introduced after that fire, and that provided people comfort. They saw that word asbestos fire curtain, and they felt safe, because if there was a fire on the stage, they knew it wouldn't come to them. And that's the way to get people back into theaters after that horrific theater. We're going to encapsulate this. There's a group out of New York City, they have a studio west of Denver, they will be coming in the next few weeks to chemically encapsulate this curtain, so that the asbestos fibers will not flake off and get into the air, and will be able to keep this. It's a pretty interesting historic artifact.
What condition is that curtain in right now? Is it flaky?
Pretty good condition now, because it was stored up above the stage, and when they were removing all of the rigging under the EPA grant to get rid of the bird waste, they discovered a couple of backdrops that were high up and had not been lowered a long time. So this is coming next couple of weeks. So we'll go to the next one. That's one thing that's happening. This is a technical drawing, it's not beautiful, it's just meant to be an illustration for me to tell you that we are about to release forbidding electrical equipment, electrical panels for the theater. And this is covered by one of the grants. So those will soon go to Trinidad Construction, and we'll get a number, and all of our electrical panels will be ready to be installed. We'll probably release that next week, which is this week.
You don't wanna use the old stuff, I guess, right?
Excuse me?
You don't wanna use the old stuff.
Well, we'll have to use the old stuff. We do have one temporary transformer on the power pole, and Krista's been flipping switches, tripping breakers with her tea room, so we're figuring that out to keep her in business. Survey, this is an interesting story, we've been asking for a survey for maybe a couple of years now, and Carl Gabrielson just remembered that, hey, I think the city has an altosurvey already. And you sure did. And so now this allows us to proceed with an addition that we are designing on the north of the building, and I'll show you what that is in a bit. So this is a discovery. Thursday afternoon, Urban Neighborhoods phoned me and said, hey, we've got a grant crisis, can we talk about it? I said, well, what do you need, Freddie? And they said, well, we have an opportunity to pursue a five million dollar grant, but what should we ask for? I said, well, we're gonna have to reconstruct the stage, we're gonna have to take it apart and reconstruct it, because it's settled over the years. And there is some steel, some of you may see this, in a column underneath the stage that's been introduced to prevent it from settling further. Well, I called Carl and said, Carl, get me a number, I've got one in mind for the stage, would you give me a number to reconstruct and then, to deconstruct and then reassemble that stage? And he said, I'll go over there right now, this is Friday morning, I'll work until I get you a number. And when he and someone from his staff, Sam, were down underneath the stage, Sam heard some dripping, and they thought, what could possibly be dripping underneath here? And they did some investigation and saw this pool of water. So that sanitary system has been dry for a number of years. It's now wet or active, because the tea shop has opened, and everything they've been putting down the sink, and every once in a while someone flushes the toilet, all that effluent has been going somewhere, but not really, because there's a damaged sanitary line underneath the stage.
The somewhere is just there.
It's what?
The somewhere is just there.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, let me ask you a question, does that pose an EPA issue?
No, that would be no different than if one of these lines broke in your own house and started ruining your basement. So we need to have it repaired. This probably was a contributing factor to that one column settling, because we don't know how long this has been broken. So that's an interesting little surprise. The surprises at Fox never end. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not so good.
Let me ask you this, is the, is the, the stage, the major part of the, that's what the bulk of the, so you compare that to your house having a pipe burst, so is it that the stage is the?
Yeah, the pipe's about this big.
Right.
Right. And it's eight, that little pool we saw, it's about eight feet away from the main column that has settled over the years.
So it's a mixture of three?
It's a mixture. Also, the top of that column was, it should look like this, and at the top it's warped like this, because that big swamp cooler in the basement, we think, ran out of control for a while and just poured moisture in there, because there's a number of worked things. That's why we want to disassemble it and reassemble it using as many of the original heavy timbers as possible. So this is a shot from maybe last Wednesday or Thursday up at the roof. This is also covered by a grant, the same grant that covered the two, the Main Street facade and the two retail bays, bringing those back, ready for business. This is up under the eve of the cupola at the top, and this is just to let you know that four roofers came to the pre-bid walkthrough, so we're expecting we're going to get, we hope to get four, we should get a couple of bids, so we'll be able to evaluate when the numbers come in, who submitted them, are they really qualified? And this is just to show you that while we're up at the roof, we're going to rehabilitate this cupola, because going back to my comment about all the innovative safety features in the Fox, and it was built with smoke evacuation, and that's what that cupola was for. But over the years, the sides have been made solid, they, you can see the metal panels. To meet current code, we're gonna have to put a smoke evacuation system, which is usually a hatch, a big hatch in the roof of the fly lofts, but instead of making it horizontal one, we're gonna have one that'll be vertical, or a couple that'll be vertical, so that this cupola will act as it was originally designed to act. And you can see the underside of the eve, that's the pinnacle roofing, it's about gone. It's pretty rusted, we'll have to replace that. And I think there's maybe one or more. Oh, this is from this morning. They're spray painting the new monumental columns that will go on either side of the main entry per the original historic photograph. There are these monumental ionic columns, two per side. They're in town, this is Trinidad Construction's paint shop, and they were being painted this morning. So what we're waiting for are the reconstruction of brick bases on either side of the main entry, that will have a limestone cap, and these columns will rest on that limestone cap, just like they were originally. We don't know what happened to the original columns, if you ever at a party at someone's house, something lets them go. Maybe let us know, they might be in town somewhere. We don't know where they went. I think there's one more. So what you see in blue, this is a, a highlight of an image from the three D computer, computer model, what's shown in blue is, it's a stage lift, dock, and electrical room addition that will go on the north. At the very top is an air handler, right there, it's about thirty-four feet long, and that is one of three. There will be four, there'll be three others in the addition eventually to the west, that's kind of the dark stuff over here to the right. That air handler is designed to provide conditioned air for the stage and the fly loft. So we have a grant from a number of people, Colorado Historical Venture Foundation, Gates Family Foundation, El Palmar, to help fund design and hopefully construction of this addition, which also includes a new lift. Oops, did not touch it. So that someone can back a truck up to a new dock, unload it, and have the stuff lifted up to the stage, to the first level below the stage, and also to the second level, which is the substage, because right now there's, if you go out there, there's like a wide-flange beam with a pulley, and that's, people won't rent a theater with that anymore. And so this is under, under design now, and we hope to issue this for pricing by the end of this month. That's just an update of some of the things, there's a lot of things going on at the Fox.
And that's going to also incorporate on the, this end of that kind of rooftop gathering? Or that was the original design?
That's the front.
No, this is more to this. Oh, that's, that's the backside, okay. Now that's the other side, okay, that's the backside, got you.
And that'll be fun when that comes.
Yeah.
So that's an update, any questions?
I was wondering, when you, from my, from memory, the disassembly of the stage and reassembly is gonna affect a lot of those, like dressing rooms below it, I imagine?
No.
No?
They're actually, the dressing rooms are on the sides. So actually, there are three levels of dressing rooms here, and there are two levels of dressing rooms below. The stage, but the stage is framed in such a way that we can dismantle the heavy timber columns and beams from the stage itself and leave those alone.
So we went to the offices.
The, the question I had was, um.
Go to the next office and you can look right at it.
Is, is it, are, are those rooms gonna remain as they are, I mean, for historical reference, or are they, are they gonna get altered? Because a lot of them don't seem like they're gonna meet modern standards with door, shortened doorways and stuff like that.
Yeah, they don't really meet code. The ones that are on the west underneath this kind of boiler addition will restore those to more or less historic appearance, but those will be accessed only by booked tours.
I see.
The ones on the west are accessed by a stairwell that's a little, a stair that's a little more than two feet wide from the stage, that doesn't meet code, but as part of this addition, because the certificate of occupancy has expired, we can't grandfather those in anymore. The code reviewers will say, well, it's a new certificate of occupancy, show us how you're meeting code. So as part of this addition, right here, I'll just point to one of those, we're including some fully code compliant egress stairs. Right now, if there were a fire on the stage, there's really no way to get off without exiting into the auditorium.
So the non-compliant stairwell will remain?
It will remain, that's part of the historic fabric. But to access the two levels of dressing rooms on the east side, it will be possible to access them from these new stairs in the dock addition, and also from the lift that's in that addition. And that will make it marketable, you'll be able to market it then to traveling companies who otherwise wouldn't want to come here, because they can't get stuff onto the stage.
How, how far along will you be able to do the renovations in the main building before you have to start planning for that annex building? Because you've mentioned something about electrical panels, in the first presentation we had, that annex building was gonna house a lot of the, am I right?
Well, you've got a good memory, and you're almost right. What the new addition will house, can I step away from that and still try?
Yeah.
So we've got this thirty-four foot long air handler here, that is just for the stage and the fly loft. There will be another giant one like that, about the size of a school bus, that will be up here. These are the intake and exhaust grills for it, that will push air into the auditorium. Then there's another one that's here that will serve this addition, and there's another one that's in the basement level, so to speak, beneath the new main entry, that will serve the ballroom and what now, or used to be meeting rooms on the first level down below the entry. There's two meeting rooms right below each retail bay, and the intent is to restore those into conference rooms. So those can be rented out and used by community groups or whomever. So there's, there's a lot of big machines that we have to build space for.
I was very interested when we went down to the stage here, the ballroom area, they had men's and women's smoking rooms, are you going to?
Those are the ones that will become conference rooms.
Okay, that's what I.
The parlor's.
Yes. Are you able to keep some of that?
Well, we wanna keep as much as we possibly can.
The woodwork down there was gorgeous.
Yeah, the pressed tin.
Yes.
Crown molding, we wanna keep as much of that as possible, because this is an historic theater.
It is.
Some consultants say, well, tear that out, doesn't make, it doesn't really work for today's theater, and we say, well, think about Ford, well, think about this like Ford's Theater in Washington, D.C. It's an historic theater, right? If people wanna do modern theater, they can go somewhere else. If they want, if it's a trap, we just had this discussion this morning, if there's a Broadway show traveling from New York to Las Vegas, and they wanna stop here, it would be the understudies that would probably put on a show here, but it's in an historic theater. We're not gonna destroy it and make it a modern theater, just in case somebody wants to use it. We wanna be proud of the fact that it's an historic theater, it has national significance, and when people come here to play in this house, put on theater, play music, do whatever, it's in an historic theater, and that's just part of the cachet of using it.
Other questions?
No, just.
Do you have any sense of when the other front business will be open, the wine bar? Is there any sense when that is set to go?
Yes, I don't wanna betray any confidence or negotiations that are underway, but soon.
Okay. You mentioned that there was that five million dollar grant to do the stage that you guys have.
They're going for it.
They're going for it.
They told me on Thursday afternoon, the deadline is Friday at midnight.
Will that cover the, will that cover the cost of doing that stage?
It's, it's about six point one million dollars to do everything we possibly want to do for that stage. So if they give us five, we'll just shed some of the things from the wish list and do the things that are absolutely necessary for the five.
What type of things would be wish list things?
Motorized backdrops, motorized scenery. Most new theaters now, everything is mechanized, but once again, part of the thing about this is, and, and the intent is to have at least one or two backdrops that would be on new rope rigging, just so that people at Trinidad State College, for example, that go through the theater department, will learn how to use that. And some of the others are motorized, you know, you just go to the wall and, instead of doing this, this is, it's kind of a sailor's skill, right?
You know, it just seems like you've had a lot of interest from these philanthropic groups to help fund some of these things that you're doing, and it's, it's good to hear that there's interest.
The best in the state.
Yeah, it's good to hear.
Betcher, El Palmar, Gates Family Foundation, these are the blue chips.
Yeah, they are. The other thing is, how much has been acquired to date dollar-wise for where you're at right now? What would you say?
You would have to ask Urban Neighborhoods on that. If I threw something out, if I made a statement, it would go on record, and I'm going to say, I mean, with probably a hundred percent certainty that whatever I said would not be accurate, but it's substantial.
Oh, yeah.
The EPA paid for all the removal of the bird waste, and removal of all the lint paint, and removal of all the asbestos, that's the feds, so they're behind this project too. So what helps Urban Neighborhoods when they pursue grants is to be able to demonstrate. The federal government's participated, El Palmar's participated, the state of Colorado has participated, the Department of Local Affairs has participated, Betcher Foundation has participated, the Gates Family Foundation has participated, that all grants this project an imprimatur of success. All of these people are lining up showing, yeah, we'll support this project.
Yeah, 'cause I think we're looking at an approximate cost for this is around twenty?
That was a number that I stated three years ago.
Add another twenty percent.
They've made substantial progress.
Yeah, you guys have done what I've done, it's good to see. Because like I said, I was telling you before the meeting, we just went in there, what was, a week and a half ago?
Yeah, with OED.
Yeah, with OED, they were down here. It was interesting, they were doing the, the fire suppression stuff in there, so it was good.
I don't know, I don't know if you remember, but we have the man here that was responsible for all the pink paint.
The peppered small color skin.
That's right.
Well, that was a fifties deal, right?
He painted it as a kid, he said, did you remember?
Yeah, being an old theater.
Yeah? You wanna do it again?
Paint was a dollar a gallon. Yeah, it was real cheap, yeah.
Any other questions for Gregory? Gregory, thank you for, Jeff, appreciate everything.
Thanks for your support.
And all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Gregory.
Okay, that concludes our work session item, and we will now go into our special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, there was a gentleman with a service document that had a question for me, he wanted to ask the council a few questions, but he has his service document. Jeff, I emailed Mr. Ruber this morning about this.
Yeah, and Mayor, it would be your discretion, I think, as chair of the work session, if you won't allow any general public comment.
Any, any issues with it?
No.
Come, come on in. Jeff?
Recently, Mr. Cabo's received some texts over the weekend and throughout today about some supposed work that's going on in our neighborhood on Grant Avenue with someone who is not apparently licensed or contracted with the city, with tree removal on the city rideways, I call it the street strip, between a person's fence property and the curving gutter. And this individual has gone to, okay, over here, you know, it's a new place, went across the street to my neighbor Nicole Lamery and said, paraphrasing, you know, hey, you've got this big dead tree up here, I'll take the tree down, if, for free, if I get to keep the wood. And Nicole told the individual, and the old, well, I'll think about it. And a couple of days later, here, this individual was over with all the chainsaws and whips and everything tearing out the tree, and dropping the pieces of tree from sixty, seventy feet up onto the street, on the tar, on the concrete, on the curving gutter, and really doing some damage to it. Eventually, this individual and whoever he has working for him has fixed part of it. Some pictures that I sent to Mr. Cabo this morning were taken this morning, where damage to a house next door, and the fence, and the trees, all this stuff is still sitting in the street. So on Friday, Nicole comes home for lunch, and the individual's back on Carl Gabrielson's property, you know, his house on Grant, and was removing a stump. Nicole went out and said, hey, what's going on, do you have permission? And he threw his hand in the air and went, like, you know, you're a woman, I'm not gonna talk to you. She says, well, you probably ought to get out of here, 'cause I'm calling the police. So he leaves, comes back after the police have come and gone, and Nicole and I had talked, and when he showed up, I had seen him out there, went to approach him to ask him if he had gotten permission from Carl, and he tried telling me that he had, when I'd already sent pictures and stuff to Carl. In the meantime, when he got done threatening me. In the meantime, when he got done threatening me, he left and then texted Carl and said, hey, you know, here's what I've done. Can I have the tree or something? And it's basically permission after the fact. My understanding from conversation with the police is that if an individual is going to be cutting trees, basically on city property, needs to be licensed, bonded, insured, all of that, and have a contract with the city. My understanding again of this is that this individual does not have any of that stuff going. And he has started taking the tree out of Carl's yard area before he has finished repairing all the street and damage done to other properties. I know that some folks that work for the city have been contacted by others, from the across-the-street neighbor to, I think, three other neighbors in the neighborhood plus police, to put a stop to this. But I know Mr. DeBono has the pictures. I'm sure that he's shared with at least one person here today. My concern would be, under the facts of him physically issuing veiled threats to me for sticking my nose where he thought it didn't belong, and the police doing nothing about that issue of it, is that if this individual is going to try to get any licensing and contracts with the city, I would hope that after anybody who has seen the pictures and has seen the work that he has done, would hopefully deny any of that from coming into play where he...
Let me, let me mention something to you at this point. Let's go ahead and kind of stop there. I would recommend that you get with Steve, our attorney possibly, maybe our PD if that's what's necessary. And they will sit with you, give Steve your phone number. They'll contact you and see the direction that has to get taken with this, with this issue. Okay?
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And for the record, this was Mr. Jeff Barry.
Yes.
I'm sorry if that was stated. I didn't catch it. I just, for the record, said, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's, that concludes our work session. Time is now 2:33 for that conclusion. Onto our special meeting. Okay, the special meeting, and let's go ahead and call, roll call, please.
DeBono?
Here.
Diego?
Here.
Oboltree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Okay, the item that we have in front of us is for executive session, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negoti, for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402 for E and/or for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402 for B, property manner, matter. Item B is for a conference to the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402 for B, municipal ordinance. Motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Diego?
Yes.
Oboltree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.